All right, I'm gonna call the September 20th meeting, special meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board tomorrow. Roll call?
Stephen Bishop is absent. Brian McDonald.
Yep.
David Grant.
Present.
Steve Feig.
Present.
Edward Belcher.
Here.
George Hanson is absent. Jay DeRozan.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes of the September 4th, 2018 meeting.
Take commotion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Chair report? There's none. Code enforcement officers report?
I have no report to my direction.
At this time, I'll open the limited public forum. It's an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport. Not related to anything on the agenda tonight. So if anybody would like to come up and speak... Seeing none, I'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business: An application for approval of a change of a non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. The proposal is to allow an existing building at Three River Road to be occupied with a place of worship in the Industry Development District. The second building will be occupied as a storage building. The applicant is the Bucksport United Methodist Church.
So I have a presentation for you to help great inform you and everybody here of why we're here tonight.
Hope here comes Liz. Liz would came. Jim Morrison.
I'm gonna show you some pictures, starting with this. This is a picture of the tax pad. It's kinda hard to see.
There we go.
But the property we're talking about is this parcel right here, and this little tiny one here is kinda hard to see. I'll show you a better picture in a second. This is Lot 87 on map one. And I highlighted roughly the area that is planned to be purchased by the church to occupy the existing building, which is currently recognized as a fitness center. Occupy it with a church. And this is a portion of our zoning map that identifies a zoning district. ID stands for Industry Development. And this whole white area here is all in that district, including, again, the highlighted area here where the church is going to be located. So in the ID district, this is a table from our land disordnance, and in the ID district, places of worship, which is the proposed use, and indoor recreational facilities are both recognized as prohibited uses in that district. So there is a provision, however, in the same ordinance that allows an existing non-conforming use to be replaced with another non-conforming use, subject to review and approval, as determined in accordance with the requirements of Section 10.12. So you go to that Section 10.12. I've highlighted the relevant sections. Any change of use or occupancy of a structure or property is subject to Level 1 review when the following conditions are met. Level 1 review is a review conducted by the code officer. Level 2 is planning board. And I highlighted the first two conditions to demonstrate that these first two conditions are not being met, therefore it goes to Level 2. The prior and proposed land uses are not classified as non-conforming land uses; they are. And the proposed land use is an allowable land use in the applicable zoning district. It's not. So because of that, I highlighted the section where I made my decision, my determination. Any change of use or occupancy of a structure or property that does not meet the conditions identified in the section above is subject to the review requirements identified in Section 9.5. So we'll go back to that table again. You can see that across the board, anywhere where places of worship are allowed, it requires Level 2 review. So my determination was that in order for the church to occupy this property, it's gonna require planning board approval. And here's a picture. I'm sure you're all familiar with the property.
Very nice.
This is a Google Earth image. Shows both buildings that the church is planning to purchase. The fitness center, and this was the former credit union operated for mill employees. Now, this is a picture of a grassy lot. On the other side of Franklin Street, you can see a little bit of the fitness center building here, that I think the church originally had planned to purchase. As a matter of fact, I think it's referenced on the application that this was one lot, subject to approval. But that's changed now. And I'll show you in a minute the area that the church will be purchasing. This is done a Google Earth image, showing the property from space. And I took a couple shots here of... This image is from 2011, saw on Google Earth, street view. Just to show you what the practice for parking was along the section of Franklin Street. These are all... The mill still was in operation back then, 2011, so these are all vehicles that belonged to mill employees. They parked here every day. And the reason I'm showing you that is because you'll see in a moment on the site plan, the church is proposing to use this to satisfy some of their parking requirements. And this, again, from 2011, shows where parking is on the back, behind the credit union building. And this is where the church is gonna propose parking as well. You didn't get this in your packet, 'cause I just received this today. This is the latest version of the site plan. They've given me a picture of the property highlighted in yellow. And they've also outlined the parking area I just talked about. And they've highlighted the area where they're purchasing property. And I'm not quite clear if this is a planned purchase, or if it's just a...
Planned purchase, yes.
Okay. The parking spaces?
Yes.
Looks like the other highlighted yellow is parking space, too.
This, I think, is an easement.
Well, that's part of Lot 87 that we're gonna acquire as well, to give us the room to put the parking on that side. The easement, the right-of-way is gonna go beyond that.
Okay, well, anyway, that's... Couple questions come to my mind, but before we get into that, I'll go through the rest of this. So this is the parking plan. And I took this 20-foot thruway label here to reference a 20-foot wide easement.
Right-of-way.
That's gonna end up being on somebody else's property.
Correct.
To access your parking spaces.
Yes.
And the same off the Franklin Street side. Yeah, okay. So you're not purchasing additional property as an easement?
No.
Yeah. And the other question I have is, I was under the impression that these parking spaces along Franklin Street were public parking spaces? They're in the right-of-way?
Everything that I've found so far, and I've found out, that's owned by the mill, but I'm not gonna... I don't necessarily wanna get into that tonight. What I'd like to do with that part, since there seems to be some confusion over that, is to sit down with you and the city and whatnot, and try to come to some sort of amicable resolution to that. Because as you said, there seems to be some confusion. Everything I've seen is that it's owned by the mill, but I'm being told by people indirectly that that's public parking, which indicates that maybe the town owns that. But I can't find any reference to that either.
Jeff, the mill has used that property and maintained that property. So kinda gives... You know, we're not finding anything any other, any different.
We can talk more about that when we get to the parking standards and the board does their review.
Yeah.
That concludes my presentation. So the applicants are here. If you have any questions you may have.
Two questions.
So I have a question. So all we're seeing right now is what the church is proposing to buy.
Hold on, hold on one second.
Not the grass, not the lawn.
Excuse me for a second.
Excuse me, sir.
Hold on for one second. Does... You can ask your question when they're done their proposal, their presentation.
The only error that I've got up there, and I apologize, is where it comes to the handicap spaces, inadvertently put 20 by 30. In actual fact, each handicap space is 20 by 20, and I can make that correction and get you the correction on that tomorrow.
Would you mind identifying yourself?
I'm sorry. My name is Doug Erickson. I'm with the Maziel Group Commercial Associates, representing the church. But as I was saying, the only error on that is what I've got in there, the handicap parking spaces and the 188 van space, I've got in there 20 by 30, and it's really 20 by 20. Just an error on my part. I'm more than happy answering the questions you might have.
On your way in. Oh, by the way, I have printed copies to hand out, sorry.
I've got a few of these, at the tops.
I think I... I'm just passing out what you gave me today.
These are bigger ones.
So what I suggest the board do is review this application, just like any other application you receive. I gave you all copies of the checklist to go through, where you look at each group of standards and find if any are applicable, and those that are, if the applicant has met the requirements of the standard. And you'll get to the parking standard later on.
So nobody has any questions right now?
I have none.
What is the maximum occupancy of the church?
It's gonna be about 120 people.
With 36 parking places?
Well, it's very 40 parking spaces.
Okay.
One parking spot.
Forty.
Four seats.
Okay. Well, we'll get to that later.
So 120 is the maximum?
At this time, yes.
So can we deal with the questions from the audience as we're trying to get rolling here?
It's up to you.
If you wanna come up and ask a question, that'd be great.
The only question I have is, what we're looking at, is that what you're proposing to buy?
That's correct.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Robert Allen.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Okay. So if there are no more questions, no bias, the conflict, nobody belongs... Nobody up here belongs to the church? There's no public comment? So we'll start with the environment standards? See, I can figure out. Say, we'll just read a bit real quick. Soils are suitable for land use. I don't see that as applicable. Stomwater runoff, it hasn't been an issue.
In the past, has it?
In the past, so what should... Nothing should change.
Not applicable.
Soil that may be exposed, it's none of that, so...
Nothing to do with construction?
Surface and subsurface, no problems there in the past?
No, churches don't.
Ambient air, nothing? Wildlife habitat, vegetation? Site visit?
Not necessary.
Special conditions? Special area standards?
One not applicable?
No, no.
Scenic value?
I don't think any of these are actually... Anybody have anything?
I'm not sure if this is a flood zone.
Flood zone? It is not. I can't imagine.
It is high enough, huh? It's pretty low. But you've got no work there.
Move on to local area standards?
It's not... It's not listed as...
There's no apartment buildings or anything near there, is there? I mean, it's not bothering neighbors or anything? Local area, our neighborhood?
That's not an apartment building, is it?
I think that's... I can't think of the name.
Foresting?
There's no detrimental effect to... No electromagnetic fields?
No.
Artificial lighting, it's not gonna be any different than it's been in the past?
No.
Noise, nuisance odors, solar gain, smoke or dust? Vibration?
Singing.
Yeah, no singing.
Good vibrations.
I think they're all not applicable. Everybody have any other?
I would agree with that.
Public safety standards? Drinking water, energy? Public safety services? Clothes? Wastewater? Solid waste?
No.
Streets and sidewalks?
Each one? Is that... That's a one-way street? That's the only... Street here, is it?
No, it's two-way.
That's two ways, this one.
That one's one-way.
Okay.
It's two-way.
Anybody have any public safety standard concerns?
I do have a question. Walkway on the Route 15 side of the building, front entrance. That walkway is a public walkway, not specifically used for the church. It's used at parking lot, well, Hill Parking Lot.
Right.
Lot 87, so there can't be any restrictions whatsoever on the use of that walkway at all. I don't wanna go through hotel.
We have no plans for the new development, the new salmon mill. I asked where they'll even park. I can't imagine these parts of the supply.
The parking lot's existing right now.
Right, right, yeah.
But, so we don't have any... The land use doesn't... Isn't a detrimental effect to the sidewalk?
No.
So no public safety concerns?
The sidewalk you're referring to, Ed? Where's the sidewalk?
The crosswalk. The diagonal, one that goes diagonally in front of the proposed church.
Right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's...
People from the parking lot, you just walk along here, cross, crosswalk, and go to the wheel.
Yeah, I don't think that's... I don't think it's maintained by the town.
So that was all privately under the mill?
You're showing it within the bounds of this law. I'm saying, it's a church owns that. They can't put any restrictions whatsoever on that public walkway.
I don't think it's how it would be if it's on the land.
It has been since it was built.
It serves. That's why it's a parking lot.
But that was owned by the mill, and it's no longer in use.
Private parking lot.
No, my question is, 'cause I don't know, is that a public lot, or is that a private lot?
It's private.
Okay, how can this be... How can the walkway be public if that's private? That's my question.
It's a good question.
Let my owner build all of that.
Okay. But it's private owner, not a public owner.
But it's not town-maintained.
It's private owned.
Right. And town does not maintain it. I don't know how it could be a public lot.
Yeah. But the town never maintained that one.
It's an existing.
Right-of-way. The mill had to maintain that right-of-way. It's owned by AIM.
Is that a... Do we have a concern about?
If I can say, I think that what you'll find is that that walkway was put in for access by AIM employees to get from across the street to the parking lot. It was not intended for public use, except for private parking.
Many years before AIM?
The mill, yes. I think it's not applicable in this case.
Yeah, it's not anything to do with... So we're gonna move on to specific use standards?
I have brought up on the screen here the section that talks about parking. This, I think, is the only specific use standard that applies to this. And it's an assembly use. This is the requirement right here. One space for each employee, one space for every four seats, and one space for every eight linear feet of bench space, based on the seating capacity, if it can't be determined. One space is required for 300 feet of gross floor area. The church is telling us that they have a maximum of 120 occupancy, so that's 30 spaces for the public, and then one space for each employee. How many employees? I think you should be looking for 32 spaces on the plan?
Not a problem.
And you said there were how many?
Forty.
Forty?
I would be concerned about overflow for Christmas and Easter. But if you can only hold 120...
So who determined the capacity at 120? Okay, so what would the... Would the fire department do an inspection and come up with a... Basically, capacity is usually on floor space. Based on floor space.
Well, I think they're saying that they're not gonna have any more than 120 seats, right?
And 120 divided by four?
Yeah, let's say it's 30.
And they have 40 spots, so they're covered. They should be good.
Our present average worship attendance averages between 65 and 80-ish in that mode. So that's anticipating hopeful growth, we put it up from there. When we have special events, or if there's going to be anticipated large crowds, we've already... I happen to also work for a school bus company and a busing company. So we're gonna plan to use the municipal parking areas that we're presently using and just shuttle people back and forth as needed for any large event that we might have.
I mean, is there anything saying that the... From AIM, restricting them from using that giant parking lot right next to the building?
That's in private ownership right now, so I don't...
It'd be a sticky wicket, you know?
So at 40, they're gonna... In their capacity at 120 and 40 spaces, it's plenty of parking.
That includes the spaces on Franklin Street?
No.
So along this row here and down this row, you're saying there's 40?
Anybody else have any concerns?
They're showing also, too, that the parking spaces will comply with the dimensional requirements, 10 by 20?
We got 54 10 by 20s listed on the thing. Three handicaps, 188.
Anybody else have any comment or concern with the parking? If not, we'll move on to dimensions. Not sure there's any issue there.
There's no proposed structures or existing, so...
So now we go back and do the findings? Is that correct?
Yeah, I do completed your standard review.
Yeah. So for environmental standards? What do we think? No impact?
You didn't find any of them to be applicable, did you? So...
None of them.
In that case, a vote's not required.
Okay. So it's actually, we ought to just go back to specific standards, correct?
Right, so it's... Yeah, you just wanna note for the record that you didn't find any special area standards to be applicable, so no vote there. You didn't find any local area standards to be applicable, so no vote there. You didn't find any public safety standards to be applicable?
Correct.
No vote there? So now you're at specific uses?
So specific use standards?
I'd make a motion that parking was the only specific use standard that came up. And given worship size of sixty-five to eighty, that there are sufficient, there is sufficient parking for more than sixty-five to eighty worshippers.
So... I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but do you mean that the proposed land use has met all applicable specific use standards?
Yes. Very well said.
Okay. Does anyone have any comment? All in favor? So that completes, well, yeah, you didn't find any dimensional standards, right? So that completes your review. I would ask that you condition your approval on the applicant providing the town with a copy of their deed once the property is conveyed. They just have a contract on the property right now. And also a copy of the documentation of the easements before a land use permit is issued. So should we...
Make a motion.
Should we make a motion?
Make a motion, yeah, you have to.
If you will, yeah.
I can write everything down, I'm just waiting to see who makes the motion. I, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendations that Jeff mentioned. Someone need to second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Have purchased sale agreement? Good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And your kids.
Have a good night. So administrative business? I would like the board to schedule a special meeting in October. And the reason for that is the...
We didn't pay?
Yes, you are.
You are.
So we still, we still got October meeting on the dock.
October second is your regular meeting. The reason I'm asking for you to schedule a special meeting is because the, the applicant for the Mobile Home Park will not be ready in time for the October second meeting, but he would like to get before the board sooner than the November meetings. So if you would consider...
What's the reason it can't wait?
Uh, you mean until the November meeting?
Yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, if you're not interested in holding a special meeting, then we'll have to wait. But we were hoping that perhaps the sixteenth...
I could donate one to the town.
October sixteenth would work out for you?
Pardon?
Would October sixteenth be a good day for everybody?
Do a second, third, do a slide.
Take a look here. Probably.
Five, you make it.
I have a planning board meeting in October, I mean, a trustee meeting, brewer in October. I just don't have the date. I think it's the sixteen.
Okay. So can we just move it to the seventeenth?
I have a football meeting on the seventeenth. I could go Thursday again.
Just like this one.
Yeah, let's just, let's just do the eighteenth.
Don't think there's any council meetings that night.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's the third Thursday, so they would be...
They go second, fourth.
We used to keep a schedule of meetings that were set for to occupy space in this building, but we've lost that practice for some reason.
Oh, it used to be on the website.
So I can assume that this room is available on the eighteenth.
Eighteenth?
I have to put a public hearing, we'll hold a public hearing, by the way, on the same night as your stage three review, like you did for the AIM subdivision. You're called doing that, right? They submitted their stage three and you held a public hearing in the same meeting. To expedite the process, you can do that. So I will be advertising for a public hearing for the eighteenth.
Will you be able, will you be able to notify, I guess, all the abutters?
All the abutters have been notified, but I gave them...
That it was changing, or?
No, I, I was led to believe that they would be ready for the October second meeting, so the abutters were informed that the application would probably be reviewed at the October second meeting.
Okay.
So, and I, I can't really do the abutter notice again. If, if anybody shows up for the October second meeting, we'll just have to tell them that come back on the, on the eighteenth.
That's, that's not good.
I have not, I've not heard from any abutters who might be concerned about this application.
Which one?
The Mobile Home Park.
But they were before. They came and protested it. Several abutters.
Well, if you'd like me to, I could send a, a second abutter notice out to correct the date. Why, why is there, I, I don't mean to be sarcastic or anything, but is it, is it the cost? No, it's just I, I satisfied the abutter notice requirement. But because there's now an error in the notice, I probably should do it again. There aren't that many abutters, so it won't be a problem.
And since this topic came up earlier, I was talking to Jeff. The property also abuts the lake. And so we've notified the water company because they effectively abut the property and will be affected by its drainage. But also AIM, representing the largest corporate investment in town history, has water rights to the lake. And are about to convey it to the largest salmon plant on the planet. So I think it's relevant that they be notified. As the largest shareholders really in the town, in town history. No?
Originally, it was St. Regis Seaboard Paper.
Right.
That controlled it all.
And then AIM, and then AIM to...
Oh, those prior companies, International Paper, Champion Paper.
AIM to Whole Oceans.
Would you, would you follow that you'd have to notify anybody that has property abutting the lake?
They don't have water rights. They're not going to be conveying water rights to a plant that will produce food from that water. And their financial wherewithal's for the sale rely in part on those water rights. So it is important therefore to them and that they be included. They're important for the future of the town. So...
Why would Orland be part of this at all?
Orland? I don't know why.
Well, you made your goal.
I did?
Yeah.
AIM and...
AIM and Whole Oceans.
I mean, why can't we just, you know, bring, you know, send them a notice?
Send them a notice, yeah, send them a...
It's not going to hurt anything.
Send McGlore a notice.
I mean, I'd certainly like to, to know about it, at least.
I would like for the board to actually to either come to a consensus or vote on that because the ordinance dictates who gets noticed. And the ordinance says that notice is given to people who own property within a hundred feet of the boundaries of the property to be developed. And the public water supplier, if the project is in the watershed of the public water supplier. That's why Main Water got it noticed, not because the water's next to the property. Um, there's nothing, there's no obligation for the town to notify AIM because they're not in the abutter within a hundred feet of the property. But if you would like, if you all would like me to do that, I'd ask for your consensus or vote on that.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we invite them as abutters via water rights with a significant shareholding in the town, in the future of the town.
No, I think that, I think it's a smart idea to do that, even if they're, they don't have any rights. At least we've made sure that...
Satisfied it.
Just to allow them the right to be present and speak on it.
Yes, yeah.
Speak now or ever hold your peace, type of thing.
They probably won't come. I doubt Main Water will, to be honest with you.
Is it really that big a deal? I mean, if we don't?
If we lose the salmon plant, is that a deal?
No, no. It's obviously, you're, you're trying to convince me and you've got me convinced that, let's hear what they got to say. I doubt I would have no issue. If they want to be present to hear what's being said and have a notice that this is going to go on, I would have no issue with it.
Yeah, otherwise they won't know.
We have no idea the water demand rights of Whole Ocean, what they're going to be requiring.
We don't. It's going to be very small, from my understanding, from what we've heard.
Small?
Compared to the, compared to St. Regis or versa.
I mean, mill, some days, you should use up to twenty million.
I know, it's insane. It'll never be that high.
But so, most of the last years, it was under fifteen. Are we treating this project any differently than any other? See, the water rights have always been controlled by the owner of the mill. Okay? And it changed hands over the years from when it was built to right now. And control of the water rights, they would like contracts to supply down X number of gallons of water guaranteed, et cetera. And any other...
It's an odd special instance because here we have AIM, who is about to convey this to the largest investor in town history. So it's vital for that reason that there be, I hate to use the word transparency, but... That they're involved.
My only concern is if for some chance, by some chance, his, uh, project isn't approved, we don't want to do anything that, treat his project any differently than anybody else.
Of course.
And who knows how it's going to come out, but I know it's a, it's a very hot topic with his, his desire to put this thing in, and this, this land use and that piece of property where it's, where it abuts the lake. Just, my only concern is we, we don't, I don't want to treat his project any differently than anybody else's.
Given the enormity of the land purchase, I think such discretion would apply to anything of however many million dollars this involves. And the welfare of the future of the town. So I think that's the main issue here.
Yeah, and I don't disagree, it's just, I don't, if you, you go through the process and you don't feel like you've been treated fairly like everyone else and, and you're unsuccessful, I don't want to do anything that would become, could come back and say, you know, we treated him improperly.
Yeah.
So we have a motion.
And a second?
I didn't hear anything.
I didn't hear anybody's second.
I said, you agreed.
We agreed, yeah. Was that a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
I'm just leaning to Jeff on this. I mean, I, I mean, are we operating outside our bounds here of fair play or not by, by doing this? I mean, are we, is it, is this normal? I mean, it, it's like Ryan said, you know, we, we've got to be so down the middle even on this. Are we treating someone more special than we would someone else? Are we or are we not?
I think, as I said earlier, the ordinance requires abutter notices only given to property owners within one hundred feet of the boundaries of the property being developed. And that was done, and the public water supplier, because it's in the watershed. But it's, it's, it doesn't say you can't notify others, but I think the reason I'm asking you to...
And we have in the past notified others.
Well, I don't recall an example of that, but the reason why I'm asking you to give me direction is because I'm not going to do it on my own because I, I think I'd be stepping above my authority in terms of how the ordinance requires it to be done. But I think, I think you could, if you had a valid reason for asking for someone else to be notified to, to do that.
There are instances in the past where this has come up. For example, we had an applicant wanting to put in a trailer park at the end of a cul-de-sac of like a decades-old quiet neighborhood. And if we were just notifying the abutters, we'd notify the two people at the end of that cul-de-sac. Yet you were going to have a hundred people going through this quiet neighborhood, affecting all the people in this neighborhood. So if it had ever come to any sort of review, it would be, I feel, contingent upon the board since it affected the entire subdivision, I mean, basically destroying their neighborhood's quality, that you would want to notify all of them. And so in, in other instances, this would apply, I feel.
We have in the past, I can recall you saying, excuse me, that, that you had notified a couple of other abutters just to be courtesy.
They were across the street or something like that.
Well, it, it could be. It could include properties across the street because it's within one hundred feet of the boundaries.
Right.
And there were, there were several abutters across the street, on the other side of Central Street, that were notified of this Mobile Home Park application for that very reason. Any other comments?
I don't, I don't believe, I don't believe any means to be...
So, kind of voting, all in favor of the added, uh, notices?
Notifying the, just notice, I think the primary water rights holder currently, AIM, it's not been conveyed to anyone else.
Okay. So all in favor? The motion that was adopted was just to notify AIM, correct?
They're the only ones, the other ones that would apply.
Any other administrative business? I'm working on the language to deal with Sawmill. I'm working on the language to deal with sawmills in the rural district and what I have so far is adding a new land use description under the manufacturing, manufacturing facility category called portable sawmills.
Hmm, interesting.
And then allowing those in certain districts subject to one restriction, and that is that they can't be located within X number of feet of dwellings that are not owned by the sawmill operator. I'm leaving the X...
How far is he from his...
I'm leaving the X to your, your discussion or putting a number on that.
You're putting out 100 and he's 95.
Yeah, that's very, you need to, is there any precedent in other towns that you know of for such a thing?
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure there are setbacks for noise-producing land uses, yeah.
When I grew up on Summer Street, house next door to the pedal sawmill inside the garage. They went, planers saw that and Johnny Starks.
I had to wonder in retrospect if the big thing at the last meeting was what we call a red herring, which is a logical fallacy. We're here to discuss a sawmill in non-conforming area, but everyone's talking about chainsawing wood. You know, perhaps what needs to happen is there needs to be a regulation for those type of businesses that would be in conformity with the existing regs for sawmills. I mean, who would want, who would want such a thing next to, I wouldn't want a sawmill next to my house, but I also wouldn't want someone chainsawing every day.
So on the screen I'm showing you where Mr. Winchester's sawmill is located. This is...
Oh, crap. Anyway, I don't know.
One at a time, please.
No, but as a business, as a manufacturer.
Hold on, one at a time.
This is the Willis Road here and this is a sawmill that, a building that contains a portable sawmill and this is the closest residence here, it's a neighboring property which is roughly... Give it a second here.
Looks considerable.
You get changed to the pointer or something?
Yeah, give it a mouse navigation.
Okay, yeah. There we go. So it's possibly 230 feet.
So 250 feet?
Don't blame you.
No, kidding. You know, I have to wonder when someone comes in and he's basically been violating town code, the rule of law, for how many decades and he's not received any fines or any problems because he had no, no one near him. So he's basically gotten away with breaking...
That's true with a lot more than this sawmill.
I know it is, but this is a particular instance where he presented this in front of us. He's been breaking law for several decades, so rather than enforcing the code of law, we're gonna change the law. I mean, come on, really? You do that for every person who comes in and complains about the land use issue? Seems absurd. It's a shame that someone moved close to him and this affects him because he was a nice guy, he was benefiting the, the community. He was donating it to various causes. Wicked nice guy, obviously, but...
How many feet is this in here? How many feet are allowed right now between a dwelling and the mill?
Sawmills are not allowed right now in that district.
In the rural district?
What is all where they are allowed? Is there, is there a distance from abutting properties?
Is there, if he's, if it's a firewood operation business, is there a distance on that? Because those are allowed, right? It's the process, what you do to the wood, it makes it either legal or not legal. And if you're processing it as firewood, it's legal, if you're cutting it into boards, it's not legal.
But as I said, that's a red herring. You know, maybe we should regulate it so they're in parity, if that's an issue. But it's not currently, they're not regulated.
Or in his words?
Yeah. So you end up adding a regulation on top of it for it to be in parity with this poor gentleman's...
So this is the table of land uses that, it's been changed, forgotten this change and making it back, oh, I can't recall when it was, at least a year or so ago, we used to require a permit for timber harvests in Resource Protection District, everywhere else you could do it without a permit. And there was a subcategory called firewood harvests. That's been taken out for some reason, I'm not sure why, but we no longer regulate timber harvests anywhere in town. That's what the zero means. And the note is, documents that all timber harvests are regulated by the Maine Forest Bureau. So it could be that the Maine Forest Bureau had asked us, actually, they didn't want this line to be in there, they wanted us just to not even talk about timber harvests because they're, they're jurisdiction, but I said, no, we need to, we need to recognize it as a land use in our land use ordinance and that it is not subject to town approval. So the firewood harvesting is not in our ordinance anymore.
Should it be in par, well, we're not talking necessarily about harvest, it's people who are at industrial level use of creating firewood that would be similar to the portable or regular sawmills.
I'm gonna suggest that we define what portable sawmill means and it could include things like cutting operations across the grain, which you'd be cutting to produce logs or cutting along the grain, which you're doing to produce lumber.
Yeah. A lot of sawmills just took up a chainsaw motor and run on a...
The reason I'm suggesting we identify it as a portable sawmill is because that's, implies it's not a permanent installation and it's somewhat controlled in its size, you know, for machines, I don't know how big they can get, but it's not so big that you can't pull them behind your pickup truck.
That picture looks permanent to me. It doesn't look portable, that's a sizable...
Well, the building's permanent, the building's permanent, but the machinery in it is not. He's calling it a portable sawmill and I think it is, yeah.
It's got reels.
Is that the structure that had, that had a roof with new sides?
Yes.
It's a permanent building, but I...
Oh, that's fine. So refresh, if he was doing that for his own use...
Starting with a portable...
Or is it the fact that he's, when he's selling some?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Brian.
Can every, if you're gonna talk, can you go outside, please? If, is the issue that, can a person do that in the, in the rural area for their own use?
Business, yeah.
Right, so it's the fact that he's actually selling some, yeah, selling.
So that's what I have so far is, I'm gonna be coming, I think at the next meeting with the proposed changes and a question for you to determine what setback. If you think it's appropriate to do that, to establish a setback, what number do you want to give to that setback?
I'd want some research figures, I just don't want to pull a number out of a hat.
Well, there's your assignment.
Well, I'd be glad to do that. If the board would like me to do that, I can, I can do that. I'm retired, I'm late.
Excuse me, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Did you just say that the, it's okay to have a personal use sawmill at home? Is that what you just...
That's what I said, yes.
Okay, I thought that it pretty much said sawmills. No way. I didn't realize there was a difference.
There's no definition right now in the ordinance for sawmill, but the presumption is that if it's gonna be regulated, it's a commercial activity. Most, most land uses we identify in our land use ordinance are commercial or non-commercial, which is not residential. Non-commercial is like a nonprofit or governmental land use. This is a, this is a non...
I think it's not gonna differentiate in the rule. It's all, it's all ready for the specifications.
Any discussion?
Well, I have one other thing I'll just give you an update on. We talked at some length about resource protection changes and the lady who came in to the meeting...
Ms. Nason?
Pleading for a change to allow her to break up her property, which she can't do now because it's in the Resource Protection District. You know, I do have the maps here, but it turns out part of her lot actually is not in Resource Protection, the developed part where her house is and she has a field and lawn. When I looked at the maps closely, I realized that the Resource Protection District goes around that area. I didn't recall that being a change that was approved by the town, but apparently it was. But I contacted my colleague in DEP who handles Sherland matters and asked him if there's anything that could be done. And his response was that it looked like it did need to be in Resource Protection because of a wildlife habitat concern, but it might need to be in Resource Protection because of a flood zone. And the flood zone's pretty extensive there.
It is, that property is quite low to Duck Cove.
So, and in our ordinance as well as DEP guidelines say that a flood zone, I think it's a minimum of two acres of a flood zone, requires it to be in Resource Protection. And I think there's well over two acres of land area there that's in wetland and it's in the flood zone. The solution there would be to ask FEMA to take it out of the flood zone, but that would be something the property owner would have to do, the town wouldn't be doing that, I don't believe.
Yeah, that's plausible. But that doesn't affect her residence, just the, just the lot that goes down to Duck Cove?
Yeah, she wanted to split, split it into a second, sell a lot off or something, yeah.
Right. But it doesn't affect her primary residence, does it, in any way?
Um, give me a second here, maybe I can...
I have the maps here. I think it's on the town website, Jeff.
Yes, that's what I'm going to. Run a spot here. Oh, it was up here. There it is, right here. It's 705. Oh, would I do this? Just click that whole thing. Bear with me, folks, I'll get there. This is gonna take a little bit of time to load, but I just want to show you what, how extensive the flood zone is in this area. It affects not just her property, but several others. While it's loading, I want to share, I know we're trying to do this townwide, not just deal with this property or Dave's property. We're gonna look at all the areas that are in RP right now to see if they can be taken out. I think that's, that's gonna be a time-consuming task that we might benefit by hiring a professional to do for us, somebody who's qualified to evaluate these areas.
You'd almost have to look at every one individually.
You might have to, you know, do a side visit. Sometimes you could tell by looking at maps what the need is there.
That sounds like a good idea.
I recall I had to, well, with you, come out and go through the property extensively with another person and she just, you know, I gave you the information when I went before the town council and planning board and they found, you know, they designated some places that were, were resource protected, but by and large, they said most of it never should have been in Resource Protection because of the type of tree growth that were there. And so I just don't want to go through that all again, you know? That's, that's not, to me, it's not, it's not fair as a landowner to pay taxes and constantly be jeopardized.
But to take it out of RP, we have to justify that not only to the town council, but also to DEP. There has to be a valid reason for taking it out. So that's why we have to do our homework and explain what we looked at, what we determined.
But it was, DEP agreed that it was also, shouldn't have been in, in Resource Protection. So why would I have to, you know, re-invent the wheel?
Well, because you're in RP now and you want to be out of RP.
I was in RP before and then I was out of RP and then they put me back in.
And that was because in 2009, we got the dictate from DEP saying you have to put these properties in RP and they gave us a list of all these properties and that's what we did. And then they reversed their position a couple of years later, so now we're looking at reversing our position as well and getting, getting these out of RP. The property, the Nason property is right here and you can see, this is, this is a cleared area, talked about where on our zoning map, the RP district jogs around that. So this, this is actually a limited Resource Protection District, which does allow dwellings. But this blue shade area, this is all flood zone.
Flood zone, yeah. Wow, that'd be one heck of a flood.
And this is something that, this is a FEMA flood zone, so we don't have any...
Is that 500 year or 250?
How old is that?
This is, this is brand new maps. This is from 2010, I think.
The updated one?
Because my camp was down, down in Naromisak and it was in flood zone, it cost me $900 a year and then suddenly they said, that's not flood zone.
Right. Because these new maps are bringing all these new determinations because these are so much better than the old maps. I don't recall, the old maps were just a white sheet of paper with lines drawn on it that, you know, it's to a one inch to 1,000 feet scale, which is ridiculous. They were horrible maps to try to, to do flood zone boundaries delineation. These are much better because you can see the buildings that are affected by them, the satellite imagery, so. There's a lot more information and banks and mortgage companies are using this, insurance companies are using it to sometimes notify people that you have to be in a flood zone now, we didn't know you were, but now you are. And some just the opposite. I've seen it both ways. So if, if you think that this process could move along faster with some professional help, I will ask the town manager if it's a possibility of getting funding to pay somebody to do that.
Can we request somebody that knows something and not a college student who's, you know, trying to earn some money?
Yeah.
Can we request someone from the state that our tax dollars are already paid?
Well, I asked, I asked the Sherland Zona Coordinator, who covers this area, for his assistance and he gave me his assistance, but he can only go so far.
What was his name?
Colin Clark, Colan Clark, she's a Colan Clark. He actually is based of Augusta, he doesn't normally cover this area, but the reason why he's my contact is because the DEP Sherland person that works in the Bangor office lives in Bucksport and they have a policy that you can't work in the town where you live.
Makes sense. Makes sense. There's someone at the county level that, that has been used by Great Pond Mountain Wildlands. I don't remember the name, but former director sent it to me, was someone they use. So I would hope that there's someone at the state or county level that could help gratis.
They can all do so much because they're the ones that are going to be reviewing the maps that we'll be giving them for approval.
Right.
So it's going to have to be a third party.
Racy, there's a lot of, lot of, how many different places to review? Do you know the number offhand?
I recall, I think there were nine changes we had to make.
Oh, that's not a lot.
But there's, there are, there's a lot more properties in RP that may not need to be, as you pointed out, that we could act on at the same time. Do a comprehensive town-wide review of the RP districts. Get it all done in one shot. So I'm working on that. I'll, I'll give you another update at the next meeting.
Very interesting.
Anything, anything else?
Oh, I think that's it for tonight, yeah.
Plus, going down, one of the better ones around, it's a survey of a thousand. I think math or wetlands, too.
A wetland scientist probably would be good.
I think they've got one on pieces along the way. It works well. They're great on surveying work. And that's part of the crux of these RP zones, the elevation and flood. Him writing that is protect where the boundaries are.
Anything else?
No discussion?
Motion, George Jones.
Second?